Ooh, my son likes ghost pepper.
You got habaneros, ghost pepper?
There's not a speck of grass for a three feeder on the ghost pepper.
Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call the Monday, June 27th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission meeting to order. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to this evening's posted agenda?
None.
None from the Commissioners, staff, any changes?
No changes.
With no changes, Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So who?
Moved by Commissioner Levy, second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is the approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes or comments in reference to the minutes from the June 13th meeting?
I watched it back and I'm happy to say it was like, perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke.
I was all moved.
No changes from Commissioners, staff, any changes?
No changes.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That brings us to our third item this evening. Our third item is a public hearing with Jay and Connie Jenkins for a preliminary and final plat of a one lot residential subdivision to be known as Jenkins Estate on Crystal Lake and a variance for a garage and a second floor addition at 755 Crystal Lake Road East. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Garros. Ms. Garros, thank you for your time. You have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate that. The application before you is to consider both a plat and variance for the subject site, which is at 755 Crystal Lake Road East. And the maps give you an idea of the location of the site. And just for reference purposes, we provided a larger overview of the neighborhood and wanted to show that the subject site is circled with yellow at 755 Crystal Lake Road and then at 735, which is two homes to the west. Last year, the city processed a very similar application for a one lot subdivision. It was called Burdick Edition and there were variances associated with that as well, primarily because, as you can see, all along here for these lake shore lots, very shallow lots. And most of these lots were developed before the city was even incorporated in 1964. So, we've got areas that where land was carcelled off and homes were built. So, we're dealing with a legal non-conforming situation tonight and the applicant would like to add on to the home. So, that is why we're considering the variance application. In terms of a variance for consideration, what we need to look at is, is the application being requested, is it reasonable? Is it something that the variance is needed because of something that the owner is doing? If it's for economic considerations alone, that's not usually rationale to support a variance. Also, is the situation not created by the landowner or created by the landowner and will it alter the essential character of the neighborhood if approved? Attached to your application, there was the City Council policy for variances and with that, we indicate, we go through each time with each variance application and indicate the number of positives, negatives, and not applicable for those various statements. For this particular application, we had 11 positives and three negatives and then five of the items were not applicable for the site. The picture in front of you is the existing single-family home. It is a walkout home. This would be the rear of the home or the lake side of the home. And the, this would be the west side of the home and when we get into the engineering section, the retaining wall and fence, this is where it's located on the west side of the property. What the applicant is specifically looking to do is to add a 10 by 20 addition to the north side of the home that would expand the garage approximately 200 square feet. There would also then be proposed a second story addition to the home, which would be the entire area above the garage, or about 780 square feet. What is being requested in terms of a setback variance is a 14.79 foot front yard variance. The standard in this zoning district, which is our one single-family, is a 30-foot setback. And the applicant, the home is already closer, it's had about 25 feet setback. So, they're asking to basically allow them to be closer to the front property line than that 30-foot required setback. They're proposing a setback of 15.21 feet. As you can see, we asked the applicant to provide information on the adjacent homes east and west and both of those have similar setbacks in the 15-foot range and that is also the same for the Burdick project that was considered and approved last year. The addition itself, the closest point of the garage to the street will actually be 36 feet from looking at it. What is unique to this neighborhood is that the right-of-way for Crystal Lake Road is a very large right-of-way. It's, I believe, an 80-foot right-of-way and typically for a city street, you have a 60-foot right-of-way. So, this is very wide. The street is approximately in this location centered in that right-of-way. So, there is, it's not as if you're looking at, you're coming off the street and you just have a very short 15 feet to the, to the front of the garage. Actually, from people driving by, it's going to look, and it will actually be about 36 feet from the edge of the street to where they proposed garage as shown. We did ask the applicant to provide some specific information that's not typical for variance but is typical for plat. And they have provided the lake shore, ordinary high watermark, the elevations of the existing property and the proposed additions. And the application is consistent with the FEMA floodplain requirements, meaning that they are out of the floodplain, there will not be an issue from that standpoint. They have an existing hard surface area of about 49%, I believe, but with the application, they're basically extending the garage onto existing pavement. So, there is no increase that's increased to the impervious surface that's being requested. The, within the application, they did provide a floor plan for both the garage or the main level and then the second level. They are looking to increase the, relocate, if you will, the current garage access to the home, to move that further to the south and to open up a little bit of a wider area to provide on the main floor mudroom and a little bit bigger entry to the home. Then they would add steps to go up to the second level. And this is adjacent to, right on the inside of the home, there is a staircase going down to their lower level walkout. For the addition of the living space, they're looking at the majority of the area being like a living room to look over the lake, bathroom is proposed and then two bedrooms on the north side of the home. The applicant is proposing to use the similar materials that are on the existing home and they have looked at and may consider some different styles of windows, maybe some that are cantilevered or box or bay type windows, but just to give an idea, this is what they, what they had provided. This would be the rear or the lakeside, south side of the existing home. And then again, windows primarily on top in the living space. Just to draw your attention also, they did show initially with the plans that the second floor would be cantilevered a little bit over. They have actually brought that back in alignment with the existing structure so that they don't have any further encroachments in other setbacks. The application includes a plat. This is a requirement of the city. It's not something that is due to the applicant in terms of when there is a land use clearance that's required, a variance, a conditional use permit, rezoning, any of those types of things. The City Council wants the properties to be platted if they have not been platted before. So, we do have a preliminary and final plat before us this evening. The public hearing includes the preliminary plat. And what they need is, it's an existing property. The house is existing. Again, the shoreland regulations for the city came into effect in the early 1990s. This was built about 30 years before that. So, we have a legal non-conforming condition. The current requirement for a shoreland lot on Crystal Lake, or lake shore lot, excuse me, is 20,000 square feet. The subject site is 7,600, about 7,700 square feet. So, they are, we are including a variance for the lot area of about 12,310 square feet. Again, there's nothing changing with regard to the parcel size. The property is being platted, which is a requirement of the city. And this shows you the final plat. Very straightforward, one lot development. And with that, the recommendation from staff is to, we recommend approval of the application subject to two conditions. One is an encroachment agreement to be required for the retaining wall and the other improvements that will be located in the drainage and utility easement on the west side of the lot. And I'll show you that here in a second. The second is, there are some minor plat standards that need to still be identified on the final plat, I believe. And this is something that the applicant is aware of and they will be doing before this gets filed. So, we're looking at those two conditions and just to go back to the site plan here. Where we're looking at the drainage and utility easement is in, includes this area. When we're plating, the standard for drainage and utility easements on side lot lines is five feet. So, there will be a five-foot drainage and utility easement platted all along both sides and also, I believe, a five or 10-foot platted along the north lot line. Because there are existing, existing driveway and retaining wall in this area, we do need the encroachment agreement to be signed so that in the event, the city would need to at a future date to get in and do work within that area. We're plating after the fact, after all of this has been in there. So, the city engineer would like to have an encroachment agreement. Actually, the wall is the adjacent property owner's wall and the applicant has, has no issues either with the property owner or the retaining wall. We did take a look at if there's a possibility to modify that, but with the retaining wall, the way it's constructed, the height and the way that it's tied in, that would be a difficult issue to accomplish or difficult matter to accomplish. So, the city engineer was, is okay with doing an encroachment agreement. The applicant is here this evening and can address Planning Commission on any issues that you have from a staff standpoint. We're looking at this as variance is primarily needed due to existing conditions that are not caused by the applicant. They were created through the city adopting ordinances well after this lot and home were developed. The lot size is not changing. The plat is something that the city requires as a matter of policy. The applicant has done that. There is excess right-of-way along Crystal Lake Road, which mitigates the variance, if you will, because this has more boulevard area than you would have in a standard residential area. So, it makes, it's reasonable to allow this. Also, what the applicant is proposing is very consistent with what's been approved, other variances and other development within this neighborhood. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Levy.
Considering this retaining wall, that's the neighbor's, it doesn't affect other than the encroachment agreement on this side? Is there anything to be done about the neighbor agreeing to an encroachment and that, over that wall and so forth? That's not part of this, I understand, but it sounds to me like that's kind of lacking as well.
Well, in this case, this has been an existing situation for years and years and both the property owner, the Jenkins, have worked with their neighbor and they know what the situation is. They don't have an issue that the retaining wall for the neighbor encroaches on their property line and vice versa. Everything is tied together and both the property owner and the neighbor are okay with continuing the situation that's been existing for, you know, 40, 50 some years. So, no issues from that standpoint. The issue really comes into play via the plat because we're plating an easement that wouldn't, wouldn't be there otherwise and that's why the city engineer has requested the encroachment agreement.
I think we had that with 735, if I remember right. There was, there was an issue on the east side of 735 with this neighbor also, if I remember correctly. Commissioner Benke.
That was a follow-up. Is 745 platted? I realize it's the adjacent lot, but does it, is it platted and already has its easements in place?
I do not believe that that lot is platted either.
Okay.
I believe it's a meats and bones lot.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Deb, I think you pointed out, do we know why Crystal Lake Road was of 80-foot right-of-way?
No, we do not. We did research that.
That's a good answer.
And we do not, we also took a look at, would it make sense to vacate part of that right-of-way because there is excess right-of-way? The city engineer and the city attorney took a look at that and because none of this was platted initially, they don't really know, you know, trying to do the work to find out who actually would have title to that. And even if the city would be able to vacate it, it was going to become a difficult issue and they would have wanted to see a number of the property owners go in. But just after taking a look at it initially, they suggested not, not pursuing that route.
I think it's pretty clear that the solution has presented itself already to that. The lots through here are relatively small.
Yes.
A lot of them, I know that there were a few cabins on Crystal Lake before and most, do we know if there's any left? I mean, obviously, this one was, may never have been one, but...
There are still a couple of cabins that have been added on and taken down. The most recent one, I think that we worked with it, has been taken down, was on Blue Bill Bay Road. And that small, small cabin ended up, they were trying to divide that site and needed a variance.
Right, I remember that.
So, that cabin was taken down, but yeah, there's still a couple.
It was on the south shore.
Yes. I know other areas of the metro in lake situations have utilized an average front setback for this situation and clearly, you know, this is actually pretty close to that. Do we have anything like that in our ordinance currently?
We do. However, we only allow them to go down to 20 feet for the average and this is beyond that.
Okay, so it wouldn't apply.
Correct.
Okay. And then you'd indicated that the applicant was going to eliminate the cantilever.
Yes.
Is that cantilevers, both front and back?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear of that.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I think it's straightforward.
Any questions for the applicant or I'll open the public hearing? This is a public hearing and at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue to step up to the podium and give us your thoughts on this application. Don't everybody rush up at one time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, I would, discussion, stand for discussion or I would also stand for a motion.
Sure.
Commissioner Benke.
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the plat of the Jenkins Estate on Crystal Lake. With the variances specified to the front yard setback and lot area for the addition, for the addition to the home and garage located at 755 Crystal Lake Road East, subject to the following conditions. The two staff has enumerated and I would actually like to add a third, that no cantilevers beyond the front or rear of the garage be allowed. And it simply memorializes what they have already agreed to do.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second, sure. With the, with the additional one that the commissioner has just mentioned.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor and a second for the recommendation as changed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Good luck, this will go to, in front of the City Council on July 5th. And thanks for coming in this evening and thank you very much for reinvesting in the community. We appreciate it. Our fourth item this evening is also a public hearing for Burnsville Leasing LLC for an interim use permit for an open storage lot of vehicles located at 801 Cliff Road West. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Dean.
Good evening.
Ms. Dean, you have the floor. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. This is a interim use permit request for outdoor storage vehicles located on the property described by the Chair. The subject property is zoned gateway industrial medium. It's also within the MRQ Minnesota River Quadrant and also within the drinking water overlay. So, I do want to note that. The property is surrounded also by gateway industrial medium, very industrial in nature. To the north is the Kramer Quarry, to the south is industrial buildings, to the east is I-35W and to the west, also industrial. Dodge of Burnsville is proposing to occupy a portion of the site. They would like to store new vehicle inventory on the western portion of the site. Approximately 200 new vehicles would be stored at this location, indicated again on the west portion, signifying the line going through. The east portion of the property, although shown striped and showing the ability to potentially park vehicles there, they are not proposing to store vehicles at that time. Approximately 140 vehicles would be stored under covered parking area. There is, maybe I should go into some project history. The site was initially Knox Lumber and then subsequently a landscape business back in 2012, an interim use permit was approved. That interim use permit and previous conditional use permits have expired. They're basically null and void now. So, that is another reason why Dodge of Burnsville has come forward today. Part of the reason why Dodge is proposing just to occupy a portion of that site is because the area on the east, the pavement is broken up or unpaved in certain areas. So, the best condition or the best paved areas on the western portion under the canopied areas. As stated, it's within the drinking water overlay. No changes are proposed as far as to the existing pavement. They would like to park under the covered area. We don't envision that the new vehicles would be leaking any fluids or contaminating any soils and staff felt comfortable with the specific location. If for some reason Dodge wanted to park on the east side where the pavement is broken up or in poorer condition, we would request that they come back for a IUP amendment. At that time, we would evaluate stormwater and drainage if they were to use that portion of the site. I do want to point out that back in 2012, the city passed a resolution highlighting a potential interchange modification as well as changes to Cliff Road West, which would occupy the southern, if this were to be implemented in the future, would occupy the southern portion of the site. At this time, there's no funding for this potential interchange and no current redevelopment project that the city has ready to go. We have added as a condition or a recommendation that any vehicles parked within the area of the interchange, basically that they receive written approval to be parked within this area of the interchange or that, refresh my memory, that the vehicles are relocated at time of, once we have funding, if we have funding in the future, that the vehicles are relocated elsewhere on site. That could be five years from now, that could be 10 years from now, 30 years from now and would be subject to, to that occurring. We do have a statement within the staff report that talks about vehicles can be located within that area with written permission from the city. Staff feels comfortable allowing vehicles within that location should this be approved, again, on an interim basis and feel comfortable enough to provide a written letter immediately following any approval for the site. With any outdoor storage or open storage, screening is required. There is an existing screening wall that surrounds the site. A portion of the fence is in disrepair and the site also does have a number of weeds on site that need to be cleaned up. We have been working with the applicant and the owner to get that resolved as part of the approval and recommendation as well. I will go through the recommendations. Staff is recommending approval on an interim basis of storage of the vehicles. One of the recommendations is that the fence on the east portion of the, of the site is repaired before the vehicles are stored on site, that any litter, debris, junk and weeds on the site shall be removed, again, before the vehicles are stored on site, that the approval is limited to the parking area on paved areas only on that western portion of the site that's highlighted on the specific site plan and that parking on the eastern portion would be subject to a amendment to a future IUP by the applicant or the property As stated, parking of the vehicles within that designated right-of-way area shown by the Cliff Road interchange for I-35, that vehicles can be parked there with basically written consent from the city. And again, we're comfortable providing that authorization immediately following any approval should this be approved. That no vehicle sales shall occur on site, any new vehicle sales need to occur at the Dodge property. And that the interim use permit is basically subject to a limited amount of time and shall terminate on July 5th, which is the City Council date, but five years out at 2021. However, allow the property owner the ability to request an extension should redevelopment not occur at that, at that time. With that, we do have the applicant and the owner of the property in the audience. Should you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer as well as the applicant or owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I do have a couple of questions. So, Burnsville Leasing LLC, is Dodge of Burnsville or that's the property owner? Because we've had issues where the property owner hasn't come in front of us and the, and the applicant has been forced to get the interim use permit instead of the property owner and...
Burnsville Leasing is the applicant. Luther is the owner of the property.
Okay, Luther owns the property. Burnsville Leasing is, is looking to just lease the property.
Correct.
Okay. So, then my question then, based around that, is from a standpoint of where you talked about cleaning up the property from a weed standpoint, the, why, I get why it needs to be done. Why would we go down the path of having that in this applicant versus code enforcement?
It can certainly, it probably should have been code enforcement to begin with. However, weeds, it's my understanding that the applicant has provided treatment to the site and the weeds have come back. They, I'm sorry, not the applicant, the owner. And they are proposing to do a stronger treatment within that area and removal to keep on top of the weed growth. Ultimately, it's either code enforcement actively going out on site, a complaint, or oftentimes... or oftentimes, the reaction is brought to, or the issue is brought to the city's attention through an active application, more eyes are on the property.
Okay. And as a Commission, we've dealt with that a lot in the MRQ from a standpoint of the property owner may not be maintaining the property, and the applicant's being forced to, and that's just frustrating for me. Can we talk a little bit about, you mentioned, number one, about the east portion of the fence? Because the eastern portion would face...
There's a portion within, if you can see my arrow, that it's basically falling down, it's collapsed, that portion of the fence, so we want that restored.
And there are other portions of the fence that are also in disarray, but we're just asking Luther, correct, to fix?
We're asking Luther to remedy the fence that is completely fallen down. They would be responsible, the owner would be responsible for maintenance, overall maintenance of the site should more fencing fall down.
Because if I remember correctly, the applicant that came in to store mulch there put the fence up for the owner, if I'm correct. And then, once again, the weed and litter thing. And then, can we clarify point number four? So if I'm following this path correctly, the IUP is for the entire property, but we're telling the applicant that the possibility of the road, the right-of-way, would go on the southern part of the property. And so initially, we're saying that they can't park even though there's a building, because those T-sheds were put in in the 90s, if I remember correctly, and...
They get back to Knox?
Well, Knox put them in in the 90s. I was around then. So, so they're on the southern part of the property, so we're, we're not going to allow them to park, but immediately after it's approved, we're going to give them a letter of understanding saying they can? Am I, am I following the bouncing ball?
Assuming this gets approved, they can, the city will write a letter authorizing parking approval. Let me go back to this slide. Authorizing approval of storage within the entire western portion. That was here, basically here.
Okay, so I was under the impression that the letter was more about when they were going to park on the southern part of the property where the easement and right-of-way for the new road would be.
So we're going to give them basically temporary authorization to park within that location should, let's say, the state or federal government give us money tomorrow to build the interchange, or there was a great redevelopment project that came in. At that time, they would be asked to move the vehicles to a different location on site.
On the site, though?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Commissioners, questions? Sorry, I had a bunch of things I didn't understand. Commissioner Singh?
You had the floor, Chair. I'm missing something. The condition, can you put the conditions back, please? Let's see, okay. The cleaning up of this site, weeds, junk, et cetera. We are, I heard you say, Ms. Dean, that you're asking Luther to take care of that. Well, we are, the recommendations are for the application, which is Burnsville Leasing. So I'm missing something. How are we asking Luther when it is being put as a condition on the applicants, on the application?
Ultimately, it's the owner's responsibility to take care of the issue. To have outstanding code enforcement issues, although this may not be highlighted as a code enforcement, active code enforcement issue, it could become one, and we just want the property taken, as a staff would like the property taken care of prior to allowing additional use of the property.
The Chair, then, Ms. Dean, what we are asking, the applicant, Burnsville Leasing, to work with Luther to get it done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
The IUP runs with the land, though.
It does.
Irregardless of who applies for it, and I would assume that the owner of the property has signed the application as well. So they're very aware of the elements that are here. Okay. Just wanted to clear that, and may I continue?
Yes, Commissioner Benke.
I realize that as an interim use, you know, we're really trying to move this area into its highest and best in the future. And because of that, I can understand trying to minimize new work in these areas. I'm struggling a little bit with pretty much leaving this area as is, given how rundown it is compared to what we just got in, you know, what, quarter mile south of here on Lady Bird with the new lot. Now, I do realize that in front of the TruSeal, the JB O'Meara building there again, we're using the existing facility, infrastructure, the existing asphalt. But I don't believe it's in the kind of disrepair that this area is. Given that we're asking them to clean it up, at what point would we be also asking them to provide some other protections? And I realize the city engineer is fairly comfortable with the issue of runoff, but it does feel like, you know, some, some minor controls could be part of this that could be put in place to try to make sure that, should something happen, should a new car catch fire and have to be put out, should there be a problem with an individual car, that there's no real, real issues to it? Was any of that talked about with applicant?
Initially, the site plan came in, again, showing parking across the entire property, and the question was, are you going to occupy the entire site with storage of vehicles? And so the clarification was provided, that no, it would just be the west side. And I think in communication, partly was, it was because of the improvements that the city would have required to the property should they occupy the entire site, because it is in such disrepair. But staff did feel comfortable that this is a temporary type use of the property. We have allowed landscaping business in the past, in the Knox Lumber in the past on the site, and felt comfortable that just a portion of the property was in okay condition to allow it to move forward. You could always, you know, add a condition as a planning commission, as you did with the previous project, if you feel additional measures are necessary.
Sure. That sort of brings me to the next element of this. How are we going to police that they are only in the west portion? Are we going to fence the, the area of the heavy line here?
That wasn't the, the city staff intention. It would be subject to, you know, a complaint basis or if someone actively noticed that they were parking on it, on the east side.
From what I can tell, there's one entrance to the property, and it's east of that line, significantly east of that line. And I presume we're not painting a stripe on the ground, although I suppose we could ask them to. Okay. And I guess the, the issue of the owner and the fence, that, I mean, so basically Luther's being expected to repair the fence, or the applicant will repair the fence at Luther's benefit?
Probably working Luther.
They're working on, Luther is in the process of lining up contractor to complete that work.
Okay. And again, I was a little unclear with it, too, as the Chair was. So the written letter is actually from the city allowing the applicant to utilize that portion, that southern portion of the site that is proposed to have the road, and presumably any, any easements and setbacks and property lines that would then also encroach further into the property. And they're well aware that that could entail them moving up to half the, half the cars elsewhere on the site, and what that could also entail.
They should be aware. It was in our communication through our letters to the applicant, as well as communication with the property owner.
So, since we're not improving the asphalt now, would, are taking the road require them then to improve that? Or I guess the question is, if they're off the west side at all, they're coming back for amended IUP, correct?
They would, if they're proposing to store, let's say, let's say the road was in, Dodge was still there storing vehicles, they would have to come in for an amendment to the IUP.
Which could also accompany the roadwork and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it could happen coincidentally, but it is required that anything east of that line would generate an amended IUP?
Correct. Yes.
I guess the trash is an issue for me, too, given that the property's been left that way, but it's been addressed already, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Levy, any question? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, parking will only be on the west side.
Correct.
What is the parking capacity on the west side? And how many vehicles are planned to be there?
They're requesting 200 vehicles to be parked on the west side of those vehicles. 140 would be under the covered area. I think the site probably has the capacity, let's say they were to occupy the east side, as is today, at least 1,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, so it looked to me as if the way the plan that came from that, that at some point, they were considering doing what Walzer did, developing the whole site. But I think, what was our timeframe? Do you, to know how long? I think our timeframe for Walzer was longer than the timeframe for the old JB O'Meara Sealrite facility, correct? So that's why this is a shorter timeframe, because there's no improvements, and we're kind of saying, hey, we may come and take half of it.
Chair, the timeframe is shorter for this particular IUP request because of the potential for the interchange to occur. Although, like I said, it could be 5, 10, 30-plus years before that happens.
Okay. Commissioner Levy?
You mentioned drinking water overlay and weed abatement. To me, weed abatement implies chemicals which don't sound compatible with drinking water overlay, unless I'm not understanding what drinking water overlay is. How do we make sure that we're not infringing upon that drinking water overlay?
Commissioner Levy, we, we had, a couple of years ago, we had, we had a motion and moved to understand the drinking water overlay district. And I guess to simplify the process, the idea there was behind operators that have a tremendous amount of fluid that could leak out somewhere, not just something that's being sprayed on weeds. So there's an operating license that goes along with the property that would, so, because we have, not far from here is the intake for our surface water treatment plant and several other things. So this is kind of a sensitive area from a standpoint, but the idea behind the drinking water overlay is a much more substantial amount of fluid than what you might do to, to kill, to kill weeds. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Benke.
Commissioner Levy, as though, too, is that, you know, the site is, I mean, it, it really doesn't control runoff to the level that you would expect, that we've put onto other people, other areas down there. I know the city engineer looked at this, too. Do, we don't have any, any grading maps or anything that show, actually, or even a larger picture, a larger overlay that would show?
Not within the presentation, no.
Okay. Well, this has actually helped, actually. Cliff Road is relatively flat. I mean, you can obviously see that there's, you know, low area that's been filled with water right there. Well, city engineers looked at it, though, so.
They're not adding any additional buildings.
Sure.
And because, and it was explained to me by the city engineer that the, since the vehicles are new, they wouldn't, likely, the likelihood of them dripping oil or providing an issue.
Agreed. The two, the two scenarios I mentioned were, minimum, at best. It's, you know, it just feels like we're getting a lot of car storage down here now, which is fine as an interim use. It's just, everybody else seems to be doing a little bit more work at upgrading the areas, and now this one's not. So I do see us starting to set a lower bar for these facilities with this application.
If I could, one of the reasons that we're supportive of this is because while mining is taking place in the gravel operation, it's very dirty there.
True.
Very dirty and dusty, and we don't anticipate a redevelopment of that site at any point soon. So this is a use that can work there on an interim basis.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good point.
I used to have a friend that used to manage this Knox store, and they used to joke about going out to the cars and sweeping the dust off the cars and putting it in bags.
I used to buy things there. I know exactly what you're talking about, now that you mention it. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioners, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other discussion? I, I, my comment would be, I would be in support of this application, but I, once again, I would, I'd like to, you know, to speak my frustration in reference to the difference.
Chair, I think, I think, I think we have to trust the applicant, too. To, as far as I'm concerned, with the tidying up of the place and getting the fence, he would not want to, the applicants I'm talking about, they would not want to have fence falling down, and they have new vehicles parked there, and those kinds of things. So I trust in their judgment to make sure that the place is cleaned up and everything is in order.
I agree. My frustration is that we've, this is, we continue to have applicants that, instead of code enforcement to the actual property owner, we had a fair amount of issues on the other side of Menards with code enforcement and things that we had to lump on to the, to the applicant. And that's, I believe that's, that's unfair, but I would be in support of this. Commissioner Levy?
As I drive on 35, I look over and I see the storage more in the southwest corner of 35 and 13, and how nicely it's been paved and cleaned up and fenced. And I also drive past this, which is visible, this site which is visible from the freeway, and it's just not attractive to drive into Burnsville as part of your first image of Burnsville. Yeah, there's a mine, and it's all industrial, and you understand what's going on there. But this is just an open lot that's, to me, an eyesore.
And the, and the difference there, Commissioner Levy, is I think we are at 20 years with the Walzer development. Because we tied that to the same, the same time, 2027, the same time of the, everything else that's been tied down there, the RDO and the NUS and, and yellow, and this is just a five-year thing, and so, I think that's the big difference.
Chair, I concur with the recommendation of staff, and it's my honor to recommend that the move that the planning commission recommend to the City Council, approval of the IUP to allow an open storage lot for vehicle storage at 801 Cliff Road West with the following conditions as stated.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. This will also go to the City Council on July 5th. Thanks for coming this evening, and I'm glad we could provide a spot for you to store the vehicles near your dealership.
We're counting, we're counting on you, too, you know, get the place tidied up, so.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five, updates. Commissioners, do we have any updates this evening? None?
You had said that you would mention about who somebody would be extended or something?
At our next meeting, we will be, the second meeting, we will, our first meeting has been canceled in July. And then we'll be welcoming Don Walter as a, as a commissioner, and then Commissioner Workman and Commissioner Benkey will be reconfirmed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Staff, updates?
Nothing, other than we do have planning commission training tomorrow night, new commissioners, but existing commissioners are welcome. I think it's six, six o'clock or 6:30.
I believe it's, gosh, I should know this. I believe it's...
Was a memo, was an email or something sent out? I didn't miss.
I didn't see it either.
It's really specific to new, oncoming commission, because we only have one new commissioner this year for planning commission. We decided to, instead of having training for, let's say, three new commissioners, since there was only one, to just have a basically intro, open meeting law, gifting law, overview of the...
That's okay, but I, I always feel that the new people can learn much from the people who have been serving when they are there. I mean, and even the people who have been serving, you always learn something, you know, so, but that's okay.
But we've opted to do a commission training more on the comp plan this year, which will be at a subsequent meeting.
It's okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
I would stand for a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Singh has moved, second by Commissioner Benkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you, and have a good evening. We appreciate everyone watching this evening, and have a safe drive home. Thank you.